...with the wireless policy. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Plattenberg for presentation. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, and thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening to talk about this wireless telecommunication policy. At the December 15th, 2016 forum, the Board requested that the Governance Committee take up and review Policy 8335, which is the wireless telecommunication policy, and make recommendations to the Board. Since that time, we've had a number of different work sessions. We've had some meetings with some of the advocates that were very interested in this topic, some of the committee members, and also the committee, and had a couple work sessions as well. The committee recommends revisions to this policy to provide earlier involvement and increased input from the community and the school board to ensure that any proposed changes are in compliance with applicable federal, state, and local laws and regulations as detailed in the agenda item. We believe that this policy with the revisions here too have been made to reserve the right of the school board for that review and disapproval or approval for any application prior to any other governmental approval, and to ensure that FCPS sites are only considered after the Magisterial District and that large school board members have been informed about the site application and briefed on placement. There's some other elements that we've incorporated into this policy, but that pretty much just sets up the framework for, A, providing more school board member input and guidance, more community information, and also regulations, including not recommending that they be cited on any elementary school site. But with that, staff's here to answer any questions and, of course, go through the policies. That's your pleasure.
I do want to mention, Mr. Plattenberg, that we had an earlier work session on this, and there were questions about going through the legal process and our staff lawyers, and they have reviewed this since, correct?
That is correct.
So, Mrs. Strauss? I think that the revised policy is good. I think it's reasonable, and I think probably from my perspective, the most important part is the recommendation that by and large, we don't or not particularly interested in elementary placement. I have found over time that really need to have a large enough piece of property. There are many more high school locations that are really much more appropriate for the ground-level installation, little housing, and for the pole itself. So, and I do think it is important that the Magisterial District member and at-large know if there is a proposal coming through, and they go out and take a look at it, make sure that there aren't any other concerns, but I can certainly support this policy. Thank you.
Ms. Hines?
Thank you. I just had some questions, and I think this has come up before, and I apologize if I'm asking something that's already been answered, but we have at the top under purpose, the new language that says where placement has been addressed. So, it says to provide access to school properties where placement has been addressed. What do we mean by that? Where placement has been addressed by whom, and what do we mean addressed?
Well, the actual placement has been addressed by all parties involved. I mean, part of the aspect is when there's a recommendation for staff, one of the things that we had in the past and was also stressed was that where placement is going to occur that is not in conflict with any future expansion or addition onto the school site. So, it really would be addressing where the actual location, the most optimum location that wouldn't interfere with any instruction, but then also part of the communication and articulation with the school board members.
Okay, so maybe, I don't know, if I'm the only one who feels that this needs to be clearer, because it's in the passive voice, and I don't know if we mean addressed or where placement has been approved, because I think the purpose is to provide access to school properties where placement has been approved. Is that right?
Yeah, Ms. Hines, I could see how you were stating about where it's been approved. In the body of the policy, it talks about the approval. Certainly, you know, we're open to any kind of changes, modifications like that, but addressing where the actual location would be is just one part of the review of the individual school board and also the at-large members for that approval. So, you could suggest, I guess, something along the lines of address recommended for approval or address to be approved by the school board member or consideration. Certainly, we're open to any language that you think would clarify.
Okay. I guess I'm still a little bit unsure of why it's in there unless we said something like where placement has been addressed pursuant to this policy. I just, I'm not sure why we have it in there at all if we don't. To me, it's more confusing. If we took it out, it said to provide access to school properties for the location of mobile and land-based telecommunication. I think we could take it out, but maybe I'm wrong. So, I'm not clear about.
I think Pat, and this is my memory, I think where placement has been, I think you said it's addressed in other parts of the thing, but where placement has been approved. I think that, does that help you, or? Because I think, but I'm trying to remember. I can't remember. Megan's not here, Sandy's here, if you can remember the specificity. But for consideration, if you want to think about that, so you're thinking you can either change it to that or talk about taking it out. Okay.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I would say either approved or take it out, right? Because otherwise, we could say something like where placement has been addressed according to this policy. That works too, I think, for me, if that's what we're talking about. Placement has been addressed according to what's going to come in this policy. Yeah, maybe just according to this policy. Thank you. That's all I have for now. Thanks.
All right, Ms. Kizkemara.
I was just going to follow up on that. I had a couple other questions, but that makes me, when I look at that particular phrase, where placement has been addressed, it makes me wonder also, as Ms. Hines said, what considerations have been taken into account? It sort of begs the question. So, if it is in consideration of this particular policy, then I think we should say that, but if it's referencing something else, then I think that also needs to be clarified. But it, you know, I know that the community has significant concerns about this policy, and so I'm not sure that we're being clear on what those considerations are based on that statement, I think is, would also be a concern for me. I've also received community concerns regarding the granting of right-of-ways. I wasn't quite sure what they were talking about. It's, you know, they're concerned about having right-of-ways on other people's property, which I don't think we can do anyway. So, I don't know if you would like to speak to that, Mr. Plattenberg.
Absolutely.
And then my last question would be with respect to middle schools. Some have contacted me wanting to include middle schools in the prohibition. I imagine that there is reasoning behind why they are not. In my mind, the size of the property is more akin to a high school as opposed to an elementary school, but if you could speak to that as well. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. The statement that some of the opponents to it about easements was really, please don't grant easements or right-of-way to adjacent landowners for the purpose of facilitating cell tower construction proximate to FCPS school sites. And the standard, the position that staff was in is we have a lot of mutual relationships with a number of utility providers, et cetera. In this case, I think it was with the Park Authority specifically, and the Park Authority is a partner of ours where we grant easements mutually to each other for various purposes. And the, our school board policy 8335, although it doesn't mention in this, we bring easements back to the school board for consideration. So, it felt like it would have been duplicative in its nature, but in the case of a utility providing power that would run across ours, our property to serve into somebody else's property, if we're partnering with the Park Authority, we would generally grant that easement as they would for us. So, we didn't feel that one, and that's how we addressed it in the committee, both in front of the advocates as well. The other thing that you mentioned, the statements associated with that lineup at the top are kind of addressed in the philosophy aspects where it talks about consider for location on the school sites, adequate space exists, the at-large member has been notified and briefed on the request placement, where facilities can be integrated into currently existing vertical structure and actual elements. So, perhaps, and that's why I thought, according to the policy language, reference that philosophy of the siding, and I therefore thought it was more fluid and more interconnected. And I believe, what was the last question you had asked? On middle schools? Yeah, I believe it's the same thing. You know, really, our elementary sites are pretty constrained. There was a lot of pushback about elementary. There certainly wasn't as much nearly on the secondary, so, and I think it is due to our site size.
Ms. Schultz?
So, can we go back up to the top of the policy, please? So, I recall from a previous conversation that the portion where it says consistent with the efforts of Fairfax County government, is that always in there?
Yes.
Okay. Because I remember somewhat of a conversation at our last work session about why are we putting the motives of the Fairfax County government into our policies? It didn't seem to, I thought that caused some consternation previously. And I'm not sure that it's the mission of the school system to provide the appropriate coverage for the safety and security of citizens in Fairfax County. I'm not, I don't know that that's in our mission. So, I mean, I understand why this language has been put in here, but I feel like this gets us out of our lane. I definitely have concerns with the first item that was addressed where it says where placement has been addressed. I don't even know what that means. It actually isn't, like, does that mean that you've already approved it, that we've already approved it, that things that have already been, that are existent in the pipeline have been approved? So, there are a couple of issues in that first paragraph that I'm not sure, I thought we had already addressed in the previous work session about this whole safety and security of the citizens. Like, this is, this sounds to me like Board of Supervisors' language. So, why is this, how did this make this way into ours?
Well, if I may, there was a lot of concern about the safety of the cell towers themselves and the emissions. So, as part of the government's discussion, and, you know, certainly anything can change, it's a board policy, but as a part of that discussion, there was comment about making sure that it was pointing to the documents that were cited on the school, on the Board of Supervisors' website about, not only were they favorable about cell towers, but also the safety associated with them. I think there was a concern to basically have something that really addressed or pointed to that, but that's going off of my memory as to what it was.
But this doesn't, the way this is, okay, so that's something different altogether, I think. If you're talking about the safety of the technology itself and whether the Board of Supervisors is promoting a safe technology, that's not what that says. What that says is, is that consistent with the efforts of Fairfax County government to furnish appropriate coverage for the safety and security of the citizens. So, it's saying that we're going to provide access on school properties.
You are correct, I'm Ms. Bo. No, you are correct, because it was for the expansion of the 911 services and the use of cell phones for emergency purposes. I'm glad you went into that clarification, because that was part of the conversation that we were talking about, a part of one of the enhancement purposes of having expanded cell coverage. And, of course, anybody else that was a part of the Governance Committee, feel free to chime in on what they might recall. But anyway, thanks for going through that, Ms. Schultz, because you actually made me realize what it was about that. And then promoting the commerce was something that the Board of Supervisors did. I did believe, Tom, do you recall whether or not that was on their actual website? But I know there was something that spoke to that. Yeah.
I think Ms. McLaughlin brought it up at one of the previous work sessions when one of these was tried to be placed on a swimming area, private pool. The policy for the county is that priority is given to public lands, to schools, to parks, and to government centers. That's where they prefer to place these as opposed to in neighborhoods. So, they've written that policy, and I think, as Jeff was just saying, the efforts, at least that's my take on how this originally got in there, we were trying to be consistent with the policies and the guidelines from the Board Supervisors.
So, I'm trying not to have, like, you know, deja vu all over again, my Yogi Bear moment, but I swear we talked about, why is this language resident in our document? Because basically what this says is because the Board of Supervisors thinks it's good for commerce or for safety and security of residents, we're going to open up our schools to allow them to put, I mean, is that what you're, I mean, is that the decision, or is that the conversation?
I'm sorry, go ahead. What did you?
I'm asking what the conversation was in governance.
The conversation, well, that was, you know, what's redlined, Elizabeth, is what we had changed. That had been in the old policy. So, when we talked about safety and security, as I recall with what Mr. Plattenberg said, the conversation, and remember again, now, this is like two years in the making of this policy, so I don't have my notes in front of me, but Mr. Plattenberg referenced the 911 service. I know there are probably differences. We did talk about the commerce that this brings to the schools, and what is it, Mr. Plattenberg, annually around 18 million?
It's annually around 1.8 million that comes to revenue to us. And Ms. McLaughlin has joined us, and I think she was a part of this specific discussion. We're speaking about the top part about for the safety and security of our citizens and promote commerce. And I know we had specific conversation about aligning that with what the, because it says the County Government, consistent with the efforts of the Fairfax County Government to furnish appropriate coverage, and then we included in through governance, for the safety and security of citizens, comma, promote commerce, and enhance the instructional program of Fairfax County Public Schools. And I believe that language, it was intentional by our group to make sure aligned with what the county had. And Ms. Schultz raised a good point about, you know, does our policy need to reflect or, I forget the word you used, Ms. Schultz, placate or cover part of the county's policy? And it really was to be, as it says, consistent. And so, when we say consistent with the county, the county's two comments were the expansion of the 911 and also the e-commerce, and we do generate a significant revenue stream from it that is distributed to the schools who actually have them.
Okay.
Ms. McLaughlin, do you want to address that, or you would need a moment?
No, just briefly to that, and then you can, I'm signaling that I'll speak when my turn comes up. But I will just say, as someone who is on governance, and we spent extensive amount of time on this, I'm going to be honest, I don't believe promote commerce at all reflects what the Governance Committee worked on, and I'm very hopeful that Mr. Wilson will be joining us as well, since he's too been part of the Governance Committee working on this. There was great amount of discussion on the Governance Committee that cell towers on school properties should never be about revenue and about promoting commerce at all. We're an educational institution, and in fact, I thought that part of the revision of this policy and from the Board's work was to focus on the fact that we're, we are an educational institution, and there should be other areas within the county that cell towers where appropriate should be there, and we should be the last, you know, consideration for these towers. So, when my turn comes up, I can elaborate more, but to that question Mr. Plattenberg just gave me, no, I don't ever remember the Governance Committee wanting to promote commerce.
Okay, so that's actually much more reflective of the previous conversation. I thought there was a fair amount of concern that we are right up front stating that the purpose of this is to allow the Board of Supervisors to promote commerce. I just, I fundamentally have some concerns around what it is we're doing there. I mean, I don't want to go down a rabbit hole, and I know others have to speak. The other question I have is this newly added 3B on the community input. There's really nothing, and I just came out of a public engagement committee meeting, so what does that mean? What does it look like? Who does that go to? How do we get the information? Do, what, where is that in the decision process? Does the information come to the Board? Is it contemplated that, you know, if the input from the community is to the negative, that that will inform any, I mean, I just, you know, that's a one sentence that is fully loaded.
Well, Ms. Schultz, though, when, you know, remember, this is policy, and the regs outline exactly the specificity of that. As far as, you know, and so we, there, we can do that. For the safety and security of citizens and promote commerce, I can't recall, like, Ms. McLaughlin, she was the chair before I was, and then I was last year's chair. But the bottom line is the only reason cell towers are on our property is to enhance cell service, and we do get revenue from that by allowing them to place it on our property. So, to not state that up front just seems, you know, you can have an amendment, but, you know, that is, and I know that is one of the things that we as a Board probably disagree on and will have to come to some type of understanding, but it is, Megan, you will speak soon, and Ms. Schultz, Ms.?
I'm just saying, though, these are suggested changes, and I don't think that unless you have seven votes to put the changes in, I don't think that we should have to have an amendment that has seven votes to get it out if there's not seven votes to get it in.
Well, that's the purpose of this work session.
All right, I'll let others speak. I'm probably definitely going to have a go back.
I did want to answer one of your questions about the public engagement. At one point, we did get more details from staff on a checklist of what we were going to do. So, there was some specificity about that. Again, as Ms. Erinat Kofak said, this is the policy. When the regs go into effect, there's more detail, but we did go through a timeline pretty closely in governance over exactly what would have to happen. This is in relation to your question about the community input, and so staff has put together a checklist of exactly what they would plan to do.
Well, I understand staff has, but this is.
And they've shown it to governance, and governance has gone through it.
But you're asking us to approve a policy that has a one-liner that apparently has a lot of background to it, and I'm, that's like, that's the, I mean, honestly, of everything that's in this entire policy, that's the thing that's the most important.
No, but Ms. Schultz, it was posted earlier. I'm not exactly sure why it wasn't posted this weekend, but it was posted for our earlier work session. The reg, it's 3335 monopole process check sheet, and Ms.
B was in the previous version? I don't think it was. No.
We'll ask our clerk to look, because the.
That's my point, is this is new. I've never seen this language before, and there's apparently stuff that backstops this, and it's the most significant part. And I don't know what that contemplates. It's one line, and it has everything to do with the community engagement piece.
Right, so we're going to have to get the reg up so we can look at it.
In the meantime, while that's being done, I can read to you what was stated in the governance meetings. It was to make sure that the statement would be that the school principal will work with the Office of Communication and Community Relations to ensure sufficient notices given to the faculty, the PTA, and the parents of students attending the school. FTS will provide written notice to the Magisterial District and at-large school board members representing the district and the district in which the site is located, and organize an onsite meeting with the applicant, school principal, PTSA president, and any interested school board members. The onsite meeting will address, but is not limited to, review of the wireless program in general, the application in specific, and community outreach going forward. That was the piece of community.
I'm just saying, of everything that we could contemplate discussing tonight, this is the thing that is the most significant. And whether or not, whether or not what has been developed since the last governance meeting, which the Board has not talked about, meets or fulfills the concerns that we're seeing as board members in the community when all of a sudden there's a proposal to install one of these and on, you know, on an elementary school, on a middle school, on a high school, you know, the proximity that it has to, you know, a community pool, a neighborhood, you know. I have certain schools that really aren't necessarily proximate to anything, and I have other schools that literally on every side of the elementary school or middle school are houses, you know, so they're very different types of environments that drive this. So, I would have hoped that we had planned to discuss this portion a little bit more, but I'll let others speak.
Ms. McLaughlin.
So, I'm glad that Mr. Wilson, I was late arriving, and so I think you and I are both going to need to bring a lot to the table, because as I walked in and I'm looking at the language, I'm very concerned that what's sitting in front of us does not reflect the, you know, give me 12 months, 18 months, that we were back and forth on this cell policy, two years, Mr. Plattenberg says. It was a long time. Without question, the Governance Committee conversation kept coming back to that we felt it was paramount that when we consider these cell towers, it should be because there is no other adjacent county land that they can consider, and that we were going to be the last consideration when it comes to safety. So, if you have no cell coverage for 911, we understand that for the safety and security of our residents, some of our properties may need to be considered. But to the issue of promoting commerce and revenue, that's exactly why when we were talking about this in governance, we were trying to get clarity from a board perspective, because we own this. This is our policy based on our philosophy, based on the elected body of our 1.1 million people in this county using our representative government judgment. And I have not heard from Fairfax County residents saying, please go generate this cell tower revenue at the expense of what some of us believe the proximity of these things by playgrounds and the tall towers that they are, and the things that can happen with these tall towers near playgrounds is necessarily safe for children. And so, one of the things we kept pushing for in governance was to get the language very clear saying, especially when it comes to elementary schools where the campus itself is so much more compact and the kids are on playgrounds and a whole lot more than they are necessarily in our high school properties where the towers are in proximity to the playing fields and where students are, or even just the public in general is, it's less of a challenge. But the language would essentially say, we technically don't want them on our elementary schools at all unless now we're talking about a safety and security for 911. And I'm not sure if that's capturing it there, but it's there. But then, again, helping everybody understand that intro for purpose with the red language of promote commerce, Mr. Plattenberg, where did that come from?
It came out of governance. Now, it may have been that we got distracted on everything else, but this was the policy that came out. I'm certainly, I don't have any ownership over, obviously, the school board policy, but the commerce statement, if it creates in and of itself seeing it up big like this, if it's causing that consternation, it really isn't as much of a significant element as what is in here about no elementary schools, what is in here about the community outrage, what is in here about the board authorization and approval. What is in here about the board authorization and approval? Those are really the fundamental tenets. Now, I know the community members said that they didn't want any easements and some of the other pieces that they, they provided. But we pretty much addressed most of the issues, even though that we didn't agree with, with a number of them. And those three, we felt were really significant. So, elements like this, the two language pieces that we're talking about?
Right.
About in accordance or safety and citizens promote commerce. You know, all of that is really just to be consistent with it. If that's the body's desire to not have anything that, that creates the opinion or the optics that this is for something along those lines, then certainly that's, I don't know why I'm talking about your, your policy, but I'm just for context.
Mr. Plattenberg, I do have a question there for clarity. When we, we saw this, when did we see this last? Okay, we saw this in July, and since July, aside from legal review, there was no language changed. It was...
Correct.
We just asked for a legal review. So, so we have seen this language before in a work session, and the only thing that happened since the last work session in July was a legal review that our lawyers here on the board had asked for because that, that hadn't been done. Well, no, I, I, I know that, but...
I remember in the, the meeting, it came up, and, and I don't know how the word commerce was chosen. It's, it's not about the money profit. It was about for individuals that work at home and connectivity for those individuals. That was the intent of it. Is it a poor choice of words? I, I don't know. It was not about money and revenue. It was 911, safety and security, and to promote work at home, telecommuters, people that needed the digital connection.
Okay, so what I...
That was the intent.
Thank you, thank you so much, Mr. Casey. And I would say that that is essential, that that clarity be there. If we want to say what we're trying to promote connectivity for residents, that's appropriate. Commerce is, so I would, I would, I would want to make sure. I, I will still say that the ability to obtain revenue for the benefit of FCPs, I, I do differ with Mr. Plattenberg on there. I had said that, you know, I understand his predecessor and, you know, the prior division as a whole looked at, and even the county back then had said, county government had looked at it and said, well, you know, we're looking at ways that the school system can generate revenue in other ways beyond just the property taxes. But since that time, there's been a lot of shift in, in public perspective on these cell towers on schools. And so, I will just, as one board member say, I'm uncomfortable maintaining that, obtaining revenue. I've had the community come forward and say to me, do you know what that makes you as a school board sound like? That you're, you caring about, and it's a, it's a tiny amount of money in the overall $3 billion a year that we operate on. And I, I don't think we can get that lost. And, Mr. Plattenberg, I apologize if I came in and you had, if I, if I missed you saying this earlier, but what has been the annual revenue that we're getting? 1.8 million. Okay. I know that 1.8 million is something we'd always love to do something with, but again, in the grand scheme of our overall operating budget, I'm not necessarily gonna say that how we do good practice on cell towers on school properties is gonna be driven by 1.8 million dollars. I think it's, we have a much more response, greater responsibility beyond that, so it's just something I hope that we'll continue to talk about as a board. I also want to just add for my colleagues, having been on the governance committee, that when Mr. Plattenberg said, and it's, it's true, that there's a lot that's in the regulations, understand that's why we're here today. Because the prior policy of the school board on cell tower was so narrow as to almost, we had no authority at all. And so, now we're coming back and trying to take some of the regulation that has rested with the superintendent's authority and the superintendent's judgment, and as everybody's well aware, a superintendent and his team can change a regulation at any point in time with no public input. So, this is one of those policies where we really have to be intentional in all the areas that we want to make sure our authority is protected and safeguarded because we do answer to the public on something that is very highly public. I mean, this issue here is extremely important to a lot of people, and it's not just this one community that's been talking to us. I mean, I'm hearing it in Braddock District because as the other communities are hearing about other cell tower sites that are on the horizon, that where they'd like to bring more and more monopoles, it's starting to capture more and more attention of our constituency in this county. And I don't think we're in an environment anymore where people are gonna say, get every dollar you can, however you can. I think people want that number one statement for the safety and security of the students in our schools and, and our employees as well. So, Mr. Plattenberg, I appreciate you talking about, you know, whether we just delete or promote commerce, you know, in terms of connectivity. I, I think, again, we're about education, K-12. The board supervisors and the park authority to the greater community want to talk about connectivity and people who work from home, that can be their focus. Our focus is what we're doing on our property while we're educating kids. So, I, I don't even know that I want that one in there. I frankly would stop at the safety and security of citizens and, you know, you can say enhance the instructional programs because if we don't have good connectivity in, in vicinity of where we're trying to educate kids and our FCPs on, that's a legitimate statement. But, you know, this, as you can tell, this gives me pause. And, Mr. Wilson, I look forward to you being able to weigh in because we've, Mr. Moon is not here with us since he's traveling, and he also worked on this with us. And, Mr. McElveen, you worked on it too with us, didn't you? Weren't you on governance? Okay, so I guess it's more Mr. Moon and, and Ms. Evans, you worked on this with us too, didn't you?
I worked on it last year and then just for the review this year. But, you know, I'm looking back and, so I, I'm gonna suggest if, if what you want to do is take out promote commerce, make an amendment, and we can, we can look at it. Let's, you know, if, if that's, if that's your one suggestion, why don't we consider that? We can do that at the end.
Yeah, I mean, I'm with Ms. Schultz of, I don't know why this has to be an amendment at the board table on the night we vote. I don't think that's appropriate. The work session is to say, is this where the majority of the board is? And I'm hoping that from, as Ms. Hines noted, it might be that maybe where the majority of the board is for what we want to bring to new business is gonna look different than what we're staring at right now.
No, I'm saying tonight. You can, you can suggest that tonight we take this out.
A proposal, yeah.
And get a sense of the board tonight.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Evans.
All right, I'm just saying, I go back, so hold on. Ms. Corbett Sanders, yeah.
Thank you. And thank you for the clarifications you offer. I can understand some concern over the use of the term commerce, but I do believe that the objective for connectivity is something that is important for our students. And I say this as somebody who has spent the greater part of my professional career in the communications field, and that is an area where connectivity for our students, especially for our underserved populations, where their families may not have broadband access, but they do have access to cellphone connectivity. And if we are sending them home with a MiFi, the MiFi will have to access cell sites. It is not through any other means that they will have connectivity. So, I would support changing language to, to rely on connectivity. I would like to talk a little bit about the reg that, thank you, Ms. Evans, you sent around with the, or the revisions. And the reason I say that is because there is a bit of a concern over some of the language which restricts the input to PTAs and PTSAs. I would just say parent organizations because we don't only have PTAs. As well, I would call my colleagues' attention to a couple of aspects of the document that you sent around on pay, with the requirement for the community input with the PTA, PTSAs. Additionally, there's a requirement for the applicant to hold a public meeting with all of the communities that abut any one of our properties. So, there is, there are two separate places where we are ensuring that there is community input there. And then additionally, I was pleased to see on page 10, a very clear statement that telecommunications facilities will not be installed on our buildings. And so, that is another, that we're only talking about monopoles out in the open space area and not on top of our buildings. And it also requires on page 11, a statement that says, before any applicant, application to locate a telecommunications facility on FCPs-owned property, it must be deemed feasible, and that the applicant must first provide documentation that there are no other options available. And so, those are, you know, what I see this is, is, you know, kind of chipping away, saying this is, this is an important policy to put in place to ensure that we have connectivity, not only for safety and security reasons, but also for our students and the families that, as many of us know, have given up their landlines. And so, I think that if we do make that minor change of taking out commerce and put in connectivity, I think that should address some of the concerns. And keeping in the language in the reg that clearly states that it's the last available option.
Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. Just a clarification, Ms. Corbett Sanders, were you saying that the last available option would go into policy or...
Mr. Wilson, if you look at the document that Ms. Evans just sent around, it's in the regulation, I believe. Yes, please.
Yes, Evans.
And I just saw this for the first time. I was just reading from it.
So, just, just to put this into some context, the, the main point of this was to make sure that school board members had more of a role in this. That, that was the key thing. And also to make clear that we, we really would prefer not to have cell towers on elementary schools. There's such a small footprint. So, those were the two main reasons for the, the change here, and to look at better community engagement throughout. And that's why the committee did look several times at the process checklist. And we did make suggestions and improvements, we, we believe improvements, on what was brought to us originally. If you'll see with what I sent around, for example, just as one thing, originally it had school board members being brought into the conversation a little bit later. The governance committee said, actually, you need to do that right up top. So, that's where you'll see number, number three is consult with the principal and respective school board members about the location. So, that was part of our conversation that we did go through, and, Mr. Wilson, you'll remember this, I'm sure, went through kind of line by line to make sure that the process was a robust process, both to bring in the school board members and for the community to be properly informed. We talked about how to get word out to the community, making sure it wasn't just to a few people. We wanted to make sure postcards went out to the larger community, that we used all of the, the processes available to us to make sure that the community surrounding the school got the word as well. So, we, we did have some thoughtful conversation on that, and I think the, the staff did, did bring us a detailed process for that. So, I just wanted to get that, that context in there.
Well, thank you, Ms. Evans, for that. I, I think that the, the point, though, that Ms. Corbett Sanders raised is an appropriate policy matter, and I think, I would like to see that concept built into the policy. I think that if, you know, school properties are, are going to be the last resort, you know, if they're, if after eliminating other possible options that don't affect a school directly, I think that, that's a policy matter, and it should be stated in our policy, not put into the regulation. Ms. Evans makes, I think, does underscore to me what were the, what were the biggest issues that we faced. This has been sort of my cross to bear since being on the board. The issues related to cell towers have came up early and came up often over the last several years. And, and the, the, the main concern, and I think that we, we have addressed it in part in the policy, is that on multiple occasions, the parents of the children at the affected school, in, 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 in the large majority, I think, objected to the tower, yet the tower continued to move forward. And so, you know, I think that, that, you know, in our philosophy, that I think it's appropriate to say something like where the, where the parents of the affected school have indicated their support for the tower. Because this has happened multiple times at the same school where the parents have objected, parents have felt excluded from the process, have voiced their opinions loudly, and I think we've probably seen some of their emails in the past couple of days, but yet the process itself seemed to negate their strong desire against the tower. And I think that's, that is, I think, addressed where we've got, you know, the community involvement and the community engagement process, but I think more specifically the parents of the first grader, of the second grader, or the kindergartner, their voice needs to have more of a role. So, I, I think that the concept where we, at the very last sentence where we talk about upon the request of a board member, this is in the final paragraph F, I think it shouldn't just be elementary schools. It really should just be where a board member thinks the tower should be brought to the board for discussion, then a board member can bring it. I don't think we should limit it to the elementary schools. I think that that's appropriate. If there's a community that's very concerned, I think that, that...
Plattenberg didn't do that?
Yes, Mr. Wilson, it's under C, under authority, where a school board member could...
Yeah, so I'm looking at authority, paragraph F.
Correct. But it does say that a school board member for anyone could request that.
So, why don't we make the two consistent then?
I mean, that certainly is up to, I was just wanting to make sure that we did cover that piece in there.
Yeah, I think that's, that may just be a good catch, Mr. Wilson, that it, that it isn't consistent. Mr. Plattenberg, do, did we intend F to be just about elementary schools, or should...
That's, actually, yeah. The, the one thing that wanted to be highlighted was the adamacy about the elementary school. Now, granted, we did include language under authority, Mr. Wilson, you are correct, and so is the rest of the board, for that autonomy, for that school board member and the at-large to have the, basically more input and oversight and say, and authority. That's why it was put under C. But the focus on F was really getting the elementary because there was a big push for that, but certainly for consistency's sake, putting that language in because it's in C.
I think that that is maybe just a cleanup matter, and I, I do, I do appreciate that clarification. I would be on board with just saying we're not gonna put them on elementary schools, in my opinion. I think rather than saying we have a preference, I think I would just say that, you know, more unless extraordinary circumstances exist or something like that, we're not putting them on an elementary school. I would, I, I would, I would prefer that sort of stronger language. You know, this policy has taken such a long time to get to where it is now. You know, I do, I do want to reflect that this is better than no changes, right? Because the, the no-change system really had us, had me as a board member really in, in a lot of conversations with the community, trying to help them understand that this is a process, we do value community input, we do value the input of parents, and then I would get a lot of blowback about, but we all came and then they ignored us. So, so I, I do think this is better. The other point that I've raised, and I raised, I think, at the last work session, and I think I asked Mr. Plattenberg to investigate this a little bit. Historically, the school system has given contracts repeatedly and exclusively to one provider, one developer. And, and it is, that, that same developer also has been a participant in the bond committee and is involved in other aspects of our, our school business. And I think what I, and I know that it's not a typical contracting process because because they're bringing the proposal to the system. But have you done any reflecting on how we might be able to, be able to produce some sort of competitive marketing of that opportunity so that we can make sure that we are getting the best value for the development?
Yes, what we did was, since that time, we've actually, our current practice is that if any business is interested in providing any cell coverage, that they could approach the school division. And since that time, we had another, at West Potomac, we had another offer, different than this vendor, come and begin to talk to us about. Now, it hasn't developed anything further. They just said to us, would be receptive. And we said, well, in accordance with our practice, we're receptive to anybody who wants to come. Now, we haven't heard anything, again, from them. But it is not the same one that you're speaking of. So that practice does afford the opportunity for anybody to come. And I was kind of excited that somebody else actually approached us because of what you said and my reflection upon that. I can tell you that we did do a value assessment some time ago about what we have in terms of comparison with other school divisions and with other county agencies. And we fared extremely well. But one of the things that came out of that is that we're going to go ahead and do that again, to go ahead and bring in that group, to have them do another assessment. But that's pretty much all I have from staff's perspective. Mr. Wilson.
But what about, have you thought about what mechanic could be put into place in the process that would enable us to ensure that, you know, when something is brought to us, whether it's by this new vendor that you've mentioned or the one that we've consistently used, how do we make sure we're marking it to the market and getting other proposals out there? Because our history is of the same contractor, over and over.
I know, although the study does show that we are doing that, we don't have, I know you're looking for a product to basically, and I said to Tom, I said, you know, the essence of what I'm hearing is, how can we basically, when we're approached, how can we go ahead and best that opportunity when we are contacted? And I really don't have, given the number of providers that go onto a tower before a tower is presented to us, because those providers, say AT&amp;T, Verizon, et cetera, contact people who provide these. Thus, the comment about the other school site that I mentioned, where we had a different vendor approach us, that's really the only, given the complexities of that. I know that we did go out at the beginning of this thing, prior to my time, and did some RFP on cell towers. But I don't really think that achieved what you were talking about either.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I just want to be clear. I'm a little disappointed because I think if any vendor comes to the system with an educational product, rather than just accepting it, we would probably see who else, and how can we get some comparisons in in terms of what's provided and how it's structured, in terms of payments. And what I hear from you is that we haven't been able to come up with a method to determine. And in the case of this contractor that we've used consistently, we know from, you know, that other jurisdictions close to us have decided not to do any further business with this contractor. And I am not suggesting that they've done anything inappropriate or that we haven't gotten the best deal possible from them on a number of occasions. But that is, you know, part of the history. And I just, I really would like some way to know and that we could tell the public that we're being the best stewards possible with their tax dollars and respecting the interests of those parents in the school who want the voice, who don't want a tower, so that we can provide better, you know-
So, Mr. Wilson-
Absolutely. And the only, if I may, the only thing I would say is that going back to when the county did that assessment, did the analysis between what the county was receiving, what the park authority was receiving, and what we were receiving, we fared better than both the other two county agencies. But to your point, and that tells the taxpayers that we are good stewards of that. But I think having us meet and discuss further how we can achieve that optimization of that, certainly, we'll definitely look into that and get back to you and report on what approach we might believe is available.
Okay, and then lastly, I would reiterate my colleague's support for taking out the commerce concept and maybe just leaving it without that in there or replacing it with some other substitute for that if we're really talking about connectivity.
All right, does anyone want to speak who hasn't? Because I have go-backs. All right, my first go-back is Pat.
Thank you. So a couple of things. I also agree that I think connectivity is a better term than commerce, you know. I do think that as long as we are making sure that we're protecting student safety, we do have something of an obligation. We own a lot of property in this county, and it's not ours, it's the public's property. Obviously, student safety comes first. But beyond that, I do think that we have, with that opportunity, we have some responsibility to help serve the public and the community's interests with our property, to the extent that we can do that without interfering at all in what we do as a school system. So I don't necessarily, you know, I'm not, if we say that the vendor has to say that, you know, ours is the only possible, that we're the last resort. I mean, I'm not going to bog this down fighting that, but I'm not sure that it's my philosophy about this. I would say what I hope we are doing tonight, and I think we are, is after two years, we're going to make our tweaks and our amendments tonight. And we're going to vote on this because I know that the folks in the community on all sides of this issue would like some clarity and consistency and predictability.
That is correct, Ms. Heinz.
Yeah, okay, good. So I would say a couple of things. So just to reiterate for people, the major change from before is that now the school board is on the front line, right? We can no longer say that we don't make this decision, that this decision is made by staff and staff brings it to the planning commission and basically we're not engaged. Because the truth is, we are, and this puts us in the driver's seat. So I think that's what the community would like. I think it's part of our responsibility. But I think we also need to know that that's a change for us. Right? And so we have to take this on. And as Mr. Wilson knows, it's not easy. It's particularly not easy to get what you would call representative community involvement, you know? We just don't know. I would say on 3B, I understand Mrs. Schultz's concerns about that 3B because it is very, it's just a sentence and it stands in for a lot. And I don't know if somebody's already mentioned this, but what if we added something like, as set forth in Regulation 3335, and then had that as an appendix to this policy whenever it's out there? Maybe that would help, at least so people know where to find that and that we're not just making a bald statement there. Anyway, those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. Ms. McLaughlin.
So thank you. I guess the first thing I want to make sure, because it's sort of hard where we're moving this up and down, is Ms. Heinz noted that the change in policies now, we're going to be the authorizing body. But I thought the way it was written is, these are kind of going to run through the system almost as a consent agenda approach, unless the board member says, you know, wait a minute, we need to bring this to the full board. So we won't necessarily always have direct voting authority on this. It's only if any one of the 12 of us says, hey, bring this for the full board's approval. Is that correct? Yeah, so I want to make sure everybody knows that the way this is listed, there could be-
Except for elementary, which-
Right.
Yes.
Correct, but for middle-
And it would be magisterial and at-large.
Right.
Yes, correct.
But in terms of, elementary requires the board's formal approval, but middle and high school, it can happen without it ever coming before the board in a formal vote. So I'm just making sure, A, everybody's clear on that. And I will say that I think based on the community interest on this issue and the fact that we have a number of them already on our high schools and our middle schools in terms of campus properties, I frankly think we should just be consistent and say, these are coming before us regardless. And if they can, you know, they can either go to consent agenda if there isn't any, you know, concern all the way through. But I frankly think we should have the responsibility to approve all of these, regardless if it got propped for the board or not for middle and high. The other thing that's really important that we haven't talked about, that came from the community, and I wanted Mr. Plattenberg to speak to this because it's our last chance to really be mindful of what we want to be doing here. And that has to be, that goes to the community's number seven in their requests, which was called proof of need. And it has to do with, you know, having a third-party person who is an expert in, you know, independently saying whether there is, looking at cell coverage maps, has the vendor shown proof of need that we need this cell tower there? So in other words, we may want more towers for any number of reasons, but is the need there for the tower? And as of now, it's, as I understand, Mr. Plattenberg, it's the applicant who makes that assessment and then puts that on part of their application is looking at cell coverage maps. As part of application, we are asserting that there is proof of need, correct?
Yeah, that's actually part of the zoning process. When they put in the 2232 application, they have to show other acceptable locations and why they're not fulfilling. It's much like a radar map, weather radar map, that shows their coverage and then lack of coverage. And they utilize that to pick a particular location, wherever that might be. They're not putting it just in any location, but in a location that would fill that void. And part of the 2232 process is they have to show other locations around there, particularly if there are co-location possibilities, why those wouldn't be feasible to fill in their coverage gap.
So what that does mean, thank you, Mr. Casey, is it's sort of, and after the fact, they've identified they want it on our property, and then it's sort of a backfill of, and here's why we didn't go approach the park authority and the county government for any of theirs because it's not going to meet the need the way your school property would meet the need, correct?
No, it's my understanding it's the other way around. And that's what shows them the need in that area. That's why they actually, when the actual providers that I mentioned before, the actual different vendors that provide cell tower service identify a need in an area, they identify the lack of coverage and where they need that coverage. And that's what's incorporated into. And I thought your question was, how can we vet that or verify that that's not self-driven, self-motivated?
Yes, thank you.
For a third party to basically affirm or verify that in fact, what they've provided is an accurate radar, as you said, of that region to show the gain and loss, you know, what the opportunity is.
And the reason why this is important is because we are, there is one gentleman who is known for being a national expert who does advise municipalities on these types of applications. And we talked about this in governance, and Mr. Plattenberg was going to be conferring with this consultant or expert just to, you know, kind of get a sense from him about the work he does with municipalities. But the point being about the authenticity and the reputation of this board, which is that if we are trying to reassure the public that this isn't about the fact that there is one vendor who has put monopoles on every single one of our campuses, so there is no other person in the game right now. And so optics alone, when this vendor also serves on the foundation board, serves as co-chair of the bond committee, for everybody to really understand whether it's, there's not necessarily an issue of a quid pro quo, but that has been raised as optically it looks like a quid pro quo. And so if we were to have in our policy that says we want from a transparency and accountability, and frankly, for the benefit of this vendor, to not have that optics out there, then if we have the independent evaluation that says proof of need, absolutely, it's that's, this location is needed, then this prevents anyone from the public raising a question about the vendor, about this board, about our motivations. So I guess, Mr. Plattenberg, my question would be, that was one of the six points, I think, that the community, when you collaborated with them, brought it up. What was the rationale for staff saying we don't recommend putting that in your policy?
Well, I'm going to let Tom address the first part and then I'll address the second part. The comment was with this independent group, CMS, for us to reach out to them. And Tom, you want to mention about what you found from their services?
We did talk to, I think it was Center for Municipal Solutions. We called them and fortunately, we got ahold of, I think, I remember his first name being Rusty. And I thought we gave a report at the governance committee about that. He was a former military person and he was involved in telecommunications. He really gave advice to municipalities that had no guidelines relative to what we have at the county level here, where we have a 2232 process, et cetera. So he was trying to coach up these municipalities. He had not any, did not have any experience with school districts.
Now, that being said, to your point about trying to get an independent group that can go ahead and take a look at the provisos or what is presented in terms of cell coverage, we can take a look to see, you know, how we can go ahead and undergird that. But certainly, any of the approaches that have come is really just to improve service into an area. And it is for that purpose that these are provided. I don't know of any currently, but certainly we can go ahead and see if there's a way we can get a third party to go ahead and vet that component of coverage or lack thereof.
So I appreciate what Mr. Casey said. And we certainly ran into this when we were looking at getting an auditor general for the school division. And we're the 10th largest in the country. There's not many school divisions that even are of our size and have had auditor generals. So we didn't have a lot to choose from. So in this particular instance of this third-party expert, I'm not concerned that he only worked with municipalities versus school districts. We are a municipality with 28,000 employees and, you know, $3 billion in operations and how many square acres of property that are under our purview. So I think we almost are exactly like a municipality in that regard. So it wasn't so much that we have the safeguard of a 2232, which I appreciate you citing. It's more about the objective review of whether proof of need is, as Mr. Plattenberg put it, more driven by the vendor or the cell companies who just want to enhance their service as opposed to it's a need because, as we put up here, safety, security, and connectivity. And so I was just trying to understand, how can we put something there, again, for community confidence and to remove any appearances that there could be a conflict of interest in the way we as a school division and we as a board have a relationship with one of these vendors to say, we've got an objective, you know, measure in place or that kind of prevents anyone from questioning what even the school board's motive would be for greenlighting a cell tower. So I didn't get a sense from you, Mr. Plattenberg. I don't think it's a matter that there isn't someone out there who can give you a third-party analysis to say that proof of need is accurate, proof of need is really more of, it's self-serving to that cell tower company or the providers.
Right.
But not-
The clarity of it, in the last meeting we had at Westfield High School, the individual service provider, Sprint, who was looking for, actually had something with there that verified what they currently had in existence. And it was graphically represented what they had in existence and then what it was going to look like when they provided the coverage. So to your point, we contacted CMS, we talked to them. They helped shepherd through processes such as our zoning in 2232. It's what you're asking for, for us to go ahead processes such as our zoning in 2232. It's what you're asking for, for us to go ahead and find out if there is any possible way, which I think there should be some way to do it, whether it's those who approach the cell tower provider, i.e. Sprint, et cetera, to identify and verify the information that they provide for the need. I think there is a way that we can meet the intent of what you want us to provide. I just don't have that before me right now.
No, I, I appreciate that. I do think that there is, just so my colleagues understand, I think there's been a misunderstanding somewhere between the community on this issue, because what was certainly communicated to me is that CMS, the Center for Municipal Solutions, does have the capacity to do that kind of analysis, to say whether proof of need is accurate. Now, if that's just the community misunderstood what CMS can do and what it doesn't do, you know, I, but Mr. Plattenberg also raises an interesting point, which is, we could certainly, as a school division, say, as part of your application, you need to have an independent party verify that proof of need. Because right now, proof of need is just the person saying, I need it, here's my cell map. And they're, it's their word, but they're doing it because obviously, this is what they want to have happen. So I, I don't know if this is going to get solved today, and maybe this is something that through our continued work with the community and with staff, that it's maybe something that we put into regulation. But I, I felt I needed to speak to it tonight because the community's been really loud and clear that this is our credibility as a division, and I, I think we can't be ignoring this.
And one of the metrics is dropped 911 calls. So again, that would undergird the vetting of the data and the metrics as to why we do what we do.
Right. So, and then, in, in terms of, shoot, there was one other thing I thought that I wanted to make sure we brought up, but I, I'm, I'm not sure that I see it here or my notes right now. So, and maybe it had to do with, well, if it comes back to me, I'll, I'll let you know.
All right. I now have three more go-backs, and if I could have my colleagues, this session was supposed to end at seven. If we can just be as succinct as possible, I would appreciate that. I have Ms. Schultz, followed by Mr. Strauss, followed by Mr. Wilson.
Yeah, I just want to, I do want to comment on this issue of the 2232s, because I know that's come up before. We don't ever see those, correct? That, that never becomes a part of the communication with the board.
You had, and that's why under authority, the board wanted more authority. I mean, previous boards didn't want that authority, because they had that authority, then they went away from having that authority, and now this board wants that authority. So that's why we built it in.
Because really, what, what's happening is that there's the nexus that the, the land use folks on the board supervisor side are deeming that it's most convenient or most appropriate for something to be placed on school property, and we don't ever, we're notified at the back end of the process. And that's why this community, uh, community engagement part is so significant, and why there is, I think, a question of the proof of need. Because it is not, it is not, I can conceive a circumstance where it would not be in a supervisor's best interest for them to place a pole on county property because it would cause a problem with neighbors, or property owners, or, 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 who are their constituents, and that it's deemed less toxic if it's passed off to us, and, oh, well, the school board approved it, or the school board chooses not to approve it, or whatever. And it becomes like a, you know, sort of a, you know, a dance of the lemons, and it gets passed over to our, over to our properties. But there is that collective understanding that, and this is the point I want to make, this, this, this is not our property. These are the tax, this is the taxpayers' property. And so I, this issue of if a community says they don't want it, well, they're the people who are paying the taxes. They are the, the owners. We are not. We are, we are the governors. We're the stewards of their money and the system. So where does that fit in, where is the contemplated fit of this community input in the decision-making tree? Is the plan that if the community says, you know, universally, or almost universally, or overwhelmingly, will have nothing to do with this, then what? Does that stop it?
Yeah, so that's basically the reason why the, under the authority, the school board member has that, because the school board member represents the constituents. And if the, and that was where there was something, I think, Mr. Wilson pointed out that was lacking. If you've got community members that were opposed to this, then we didn't have a way that we could stop one that already was down the rail. So-
Can we go back up to the top of the policy, then? This is where, honestly, and I, I can't emphasize this enough, this is where the, this lead-in for this policy becomes crucial. Because either it's a priority to focus on what the board of supervisors wants, or it's not. But the reality is, is that this, these, this is school property. So I, I think that it is essential to have some language in here that says that, that this is not the priority, is to place monopoles on school property, that the priority is to work with the board of supervisors and land use for the most appropriate placement, and that only when sufficient need is, is documented through the course of the 2232s, or, you know, whatever community input, that, that all of that happens before we authorize a monopole going on to, onto school property. That there are plenty of other options that are available. There are commercial entities with tall buildings that have plenty of roof space, and I know we've had the, I, I understand the infrastructure issues associated with that. But placing it on, you know, school property should be, you know, okay, when nothing else is available, as a public resource, this land is publicly owned, and we do whatever process is necessary. That, that, I, I want us to make sure that we emphasize, this is not our decision to make, you know, outside the purview of the people who, you know, whose money has provided the land in the first place.
Ms. Strauss.
Very briefly, I agree with adding the word promote residential connectivity, because that's important for our, our kids and our families and parents who, who, who work at home and help their children as well. As Mr. Plattenberg said, years ago, there was a time when the school board made all the decisions and all the technical decisions, and it was laborious, it was inefficient. And we changed the policy, but I think it's, it is appropriate for the school board to absolutely be sort of the first cut in the discussion with the community, and to essentially put elementary schools off limits. The, the 2232 and the planning commission, there, there is a parallel process that is very intense. So our part is to make sure that we have a community, and not just the parents or the children, but the community as well, that everybody is okay with it, and if it's not, then we stop. But it is the planning commission, the 2232, that does the, the very technical work, and that is their job, and they are staffed to do that. So with some of the other tweaks that people have brought up, I am basically fine with it. And I don't want us to get back into being the, the technical side of the 2232. It is very labor-intensive, and there is county staff that will do that part of it. I'm involved in the beginning process of probably what we go through is a, is a cell tower at Hearn in high school that is basically in the middle of the property, way, way away from everybody else. And the vendor came and said, this is, this is where we have lack of coverage, dropped 911 calls. But they also said, but we have to go to the entire community, do the balloon thing, go to the counties, that'll take six months to a year. So there are duplicative processes that are important.
And Mr. Wilson, before we go to next steps.
Thank you. So one of the things that I learned during the process of, of learning about cell towers and our policy, and the efforts of community members to stop the installation of a cell tower at their child's elementary school, was that, under the rules of federal government, the zoning board can't take into consideration, into the approval process, the safety of the RF emissions that come off of cell towers or, or other wavelengths and emissions. But that doesn't mean that as board members, we shouldn't be aware and knowledgeable of what the latest research is on the safety. And, and can you just give us an update? I know that that's something you guys have first and foremost, on what the current research is on the exposure of, of, of radio frequency emissions from cell towers, and generally speaking, because as we add, you know, mini-towers inside schools, and kids are having, you know, their, their cell phones and laptops and tablets, what, what is the research telling us about the effect of that on incidence of illness in children?
That's a good question, Mr. Wilson. And I'm not a public health official, but all the information that was provided to this and everything that we reviewed, we found that, when, I was mentioning this earlier, we found that we have an opportunity to articulate more about the emissions from an actual cellphone and its proximity to the human body, specifically to the head, that in the majority, in the preponderance of data that was provided to us by the advocates, that there was a constant theme associated with that. We did, we do actual exams and do studies of bounce of RF frequencies. And because our schools, when they're filled with students with cell phones each individually, it throws it off to give it a higher skew, because they each are carrying cell phones than when the building's empty. So we found some interesting things in that data, and that really, the majority of it is, we have an opportunity for an educational component to work with Ms. Loveglass, and try to get some more information out there to our students about the use of handheld devices. But that being said, it's constantly unfolding, and they're constantly sending us stuff to review and, and take a look at that.
So, I mean, I'm not sure, yeah, I'm not sure I interpreted this correctly, but are you, are you saying that, that there's more information that is suggesting that close proximity of your cellphone to your ear could be potentially a health risk? And I guess this is something that I think, I think everybody sitting on the table would agree. We, we absolutely have to try to be as forward as possible in terms of the safety. So I know that there are RF emissions blocking, you know, cases that you can buy for your phone. If there are, are things like that that we need to understand as we roll out things like FCPS on, please tell us so that we can make, you know, the best decision we can for the safety of the classroom.
Ms. Palchuk.
Thank you. A very brief question. So some of the concerns have been around the emissions, and thank you for sharing that data. Mine is more around the aesthetics. I have one of, I believe, the ugliest monopoles in the county, in, in a former school. And I know it's under C, sorry, I'm looking at C4, I think where the facilities can be constructed in such a manner as to resemble other man-made structures and natural features, such as light poles and trees. I think they were going for the sky in this one. It just looks awful, and I think it's just not, you know, helpful, especially in a community where maybe there's less awareness beforehand of what is coming, what it's going to look like. And then it affects the community and, and the houses around it and the school. So who makes those final decisions? Is that through the process, where they decide, you know, what the final monopole will look like?
Well, certainly, with this board policy, it has a school board member. It is involved in the process. You know, I don't, I don't really have any taste, so when it comes to those types of things, I'm, I'm not a big fan of, of some clock tower things, or the ones that look like pine trees. But I've actually seen some that really do blend in well, more as of late than previously.
I think some tree ones actually blended nicely when they're on trees.
And, and I think there was a lot of, I've got a lot of feedback that people like the particular one you're speaking of. And so I figured the old Latin saying, "De gustibus est non disputandum." And one's taste is not for dispute. Mine may align with yours, but I don't, I don't know.
Okay, so, but that, just so we know, that is, we are involved in that. That's not just the county staff process. Okay.
We'll make sure that the-
I'm not saying I'm aesthetically in tune, but to me, that one looks a little tacky. Okay. Thank you.
All right. We are ready for next steps. In yellow. Okay. Let's, let's go through those. All right.
Madam McClure, could you make that a little bit, oh, okay, you just did. Okay, thank you.
The first one here we have is-
That's still, I struggle with that one, ma'am chair.
According to this policy?
Address, meaning what? I mean, I appreciate the addition of that, according to the policy, but it's the where placement has been addressed that is beyond nebulous.
Yeah, it's in the lower part of the philosophy. It references to the lower part of the philosophy where it says on the second piece, adequate space exists, the magistrate district at large members have been notified and briefed on their request of placement, facilities being integrated in a currently existing vertical structure of natural elements, to some of the conversation we had a minute ago. And then where facilities can be constructed in such a manner as to resemble other man-made structures of natural features, such as light poles and trees. So it really is in reference, the where placement has been addressed according to the policy is, and maybe it should say according to the philosophy, but it's in reference to that piece down below.
If, if I could mention that this originally said where placement was addressed with the school board members. So that was where that originally was, but I think it probably is better saying it this way, because then it references the whole policy.
Go ahead, Megan.
Okay, so I, I, I mentioned to my colleague, to my, my left, Mr. McElveen, that my concern is, it's not just, obviously, we need a good, sound policy. We need one that is appropriately articulated, or it's going to reflect on the 12 of us. Right now, I completely appreciate Mr. Plattenberg giving us the, no, but you gave us the context for why it's reading that way. But actually, I think every English teacher in Fairfax County alone, just starting with them, would fail us on the way that, that's just a structured sentence. I think we're trying to do too much in the purpose, just streamline it, say, to provide access to school properties for the location of, I mean, because what's our purpose? The purpose is to do this. Then we talk about the philosophy.
I, I got that. Mr. McElveen, you want to speak on this?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's unintelligible, is it currently read. So I would just delete, delete all of that. Thank you.
Okay, there we go. One done. Number two. Re- replacing, yes, replacing commerce with promote connectivity.
Shouldn't even say wireless connectivity, just so people understand what we mean by connecting. This is all about enhancing wireless access, right?
Sure.
So let's just put that qualifier in there.
Who knows? Yes, she did. It struck, it struck. It's, all right.
And then, but my, my, I just want to make sure we put the final thing. I had suggested, so I would appreciate maybe highlighted in yellow as something to vote on, was to get rid of, to obtain revenue for the benefit of FCPS. I mean, we again said, we're fine with saying we care about promoting wireless connectivity, but this isn't about revenue-making. At the very end, to obtain revenue. So it should just end at-
Okay, well, all right. So let's, let's, let's just do this. The way we're going to have to do this, I'll, I'll just show hands. That will be easiest for me. So we're looking right now for the safety and security of citizens, and to promote wireless connectivity. Is everybody replacing commerce? Can I see a show of hands? All right, that, that, the majority. Okay, now, Ms. McLaughlin has a suggestion.
Right, and-
Just wait, just wait. We all see what it is, as well as to obtain revenue for the benefit of FCPS. And she wants to take that out. Right? Yes, you want to take that out.
As well as, right. It'd be a period after FCPS.
All right. Is there discussion on this? Okay. Ms. Schultz, followed by Ms. Heinz.
Oh, this is the thing that I brought up in the beginning. So, no, I'm, I was voting.
Oh, I think Ms. Heinz has commented.
I mean, we haven't really talked about it, so I thought I'll be, I'll be quick. But, I mean, you know, $1.8 million is 20 teachers in the staffing reserve. It may be, in the grand scheme of things, not a lot. But you know, when we get to budget time, we're, we're debating over less than a million dollars, you know, here and there. And so it does provide revenue for the benefit of FCPS, and I think- for the benefit of FCPs, and I think we should leave that in there.
I, I, I got it, okay. I'll just say, my piece, I agree with Pat, I said that at the beginning here. Ms. McLaughlin.
So, again, it's not that there isn't going to be, as everybody understands, you do this with naming rights, or you do it with other things, there's other ways that we're going to bring revenue in, but what are we communicating to the public, to our families, and to even the vendors? That we're open for business because we like the idea that this can bring us more money? We're not eliminating 1.8 million, by the way, this is whether we'll grow it by another $100,000 per tower. So I'm asking you all to think about, no one's flushing away 1.8 million, that's what we're taking in now with the towers we have. Then it's going to be, so you want revenue, or you want to care about elementary schools? Because that's pretty much where most of our land is. I don't think it speaks well of this board to say that we're about putting cell towers because it's about money when it's about $50,000 to $100,000 per tower, it's a wrong message.
Ms. Schultz, followed by Ms. Strauss.
This is the purpose, we, if, if people vote for this, you're saying the purpose behind what you're doing is to obtain revenue. Now, if you happen to obtain revenue in the course of doing something that has a purpose, that's one thing. I'm not going to vote for upholding this as the purpose of the policy is to obtain revenue, that is fundamentally, I reject that as a fundamental notion, that we're going to raise money off the backs of kids by putting monopoles on, on school properties, that, that, I think that, you know, words are powerful, and that does not belong in the purpose of this policy.
Ms.
However, individual schools, particularly high schools, who have multiple monopoles are very welcome, it's a very welcome addition, and it's significant in some of, particularly the high schools that have them.
Okay, look, I think at this point, I think at this point- No, no, there needs to be a clarification, Ms. Durant-Kofax, they get almost none of that revenue, it goes to central administration, so I, no one's taking revenue away from the existing poles, but what Ms. Strauss said is just not factually accurate, they get almost none of that money, it goes to central administration.
Okay, I think, I think we know, Mr. Wilson, and you can state your opinion briefly, but I think we're going to take a vote, I think you can see that this board is, has different opinions on this, this line.
Thank you. You know, I don't think this, this clause is appropriate in the purpose, I think we all understand that an incidental result of allowing a cell tower on our schools results in remuneration to the system, which is not a bad thing, but having said that, you know, one of the comparisons that we discussed in governance was, well, how much remuneration do we get versus what would it cost if they put it into the park authority land? And again, I just want to get back to my, my comments about, I need to understand that that we are, to the extent we're allowing this, getting the best bang for the buck in terms of, of that compensation.
All right, so right now, Ms. McLaughlin has asked that the yellow highlighted portion, as well as to obtain revenue for the benefit of FCPs, be taken out, all those in favor of that? One, two, three, four, five, those opposed? One, two, three, four, five, six, all right, so that stays. All right, we're going down to item number three, philosophy, and we are adding, under item number B, community input will be solicited prior to any decisions on telecommunications facilities, and we are adding as set forth in Regulation 8335. All right, any, let's, no discussion, everybody in favor of that, raise your hand? It's nearly unanimous? One moment, please, I need to confer with Ms. Evans.
Now, Tom, we're- Mr. Wilson, hadn't you-
Yeah, I had suggested language in the philosophy paragraph that, to the effect that, you know, where the, where the parents, you know, one of the criterias where the, where the parents of an affected school have indicated their support for a tower, and I know that's a difficult thing to determine, other than going to the PTA or PTO, but at least some indication, because in the, in the one instance that I'm most familiar with, there was loud objection that did not get reflected in the process, so I would like to see that the parents are on board.
Mr. Wilson, could I make a suggestion on that? When I, when I heard what you had to say, I was thinking that, first of all, I think we probably should, if we're going to do this, I think we should extend this to the community, community members, not just parents, to, because it would be surrounding-
I think we have community already in there, right? I mean, we've talked about community input up above.
Well, I was, I guess what, what I was wondering is, if we were going to do this, wouldn't this be under, well, I guess, I was thinking that this could be, if we're going to do this, that maybe a C5 is where this is, wireless telecommunications will be, oh, I see.
It could be in C5.
So, and, you know, if, if we're saying something along the lines of where there's significant support from-
The parent community.
Parents and other community members, or, or, community members.
Or significant.
Or sufficient, sufficient, or whatever you want to say, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, I have discussed, let's, so, let's first check with Mr. Wilson. Mr. Wilson, are you comfortable with the language as it sits up there?
I think that's, yeah, that's definitely a step in the right direction.
All right, so let's, let's have communication on this. Ms. Kies-Gamaro.
Yeah, I, that language is, I understand the intent, I believe the intent is to make sure that we're listening to the community, however, how the community measures whether you have listened to them or not varies depending on what decision you make. It is a slippery, very difficult thing to measure, I, I find it troubling, I do understand the intent, however, that line could be used to say, you could not make that decision because of what a particular person or a particular group expressed, and it may be contrary to what someone else expressed, and then you get into this thing about trying to prove what was said, and it's difficult, I believe.
Maybe, maybe taking out the word significant, where there is support, I mean, if we can't show some support, here's the, here's the thing about the 2232 process, and correct me if I'm wrong, that, when they, when an application comes in, there's a requirement that notices go out to neighbors within a certain distance, so, so that doesn't, that doesn't necessarily sweep in the families involved, and so this is, this is an intent, this would be an intentional change to ensure that school, community, parents are aware.
That's a different issue, if I may speak to that, that's, notification is a different issue. If you're talking about notification, that's something that I think is clearly measured because it is under our control, but when you start talking about support, I'm not sure how you measure that.
Well, I think that, you know, I think notification is, would be appropriate, I think that's, that'd be a great idea to add in there as well, but I do think that you have to show some support, right? If you can show no support, then that's a relevant factor for me.
As a former member of the Planning Commission, who had to go through that process of notifying people within a certain radius, there is always, irrespective of how you can prove that you mailed it to people, you posted it, you did all the things in line with the law, there is always some back, someone that comes back and says, we did not get the notification, we didn't have an opportunity. I, I think the only thing that I could support is the language that governs our actions, because that's something that we can clearly measure.
Yeah, to me, the, the number one issue that has driven this policy adjustment has been the, the ability of parents who are affected to have an impact on the process, and, and so, part of it is notification and giving them opportunities, and, and taking into account their opinions, and, and this is, it is maybe a rough proxy, but the intent here is to have some sort of proxy, this proxy to show that where you have a community that has shown no support, then, then that's something relevant for the board. Now, I agree with you that you always have a board member or an at-large member that could bring it, but I think that putting, leaving it, leaving this policy silent on involving those parents, I think is a mistake.
Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Heinz.
So, based on my prior comments, this might surprise you all where I'm going to come down on this one. Mr. Wilson, I totally appreciate the intent here, but this is probably one of the greatest challenges when you take up an issue like cell towers on school properties, which is, it's just become a controversial public topic, and as a board, we, we have to be making these decisions based on as close as possible data, evidence, and, you know, overall decision-making that's as objective as possible. So, as one board member, I would never make a decision on a tower, yes or no, because people are behind it or not, just because I can't even count on why they support it or they don't support it. One of the things that I'm actually more comfortable with the changes in this policy is we're trying to put objective reasoning, if we need, we're trying to address connectivity issues and servicing the instructional programs in the schools, then those are objective factors that may require it. We're still putting in here that community input's being solicited, and that board members can certainly bring the community concerns to the table, but as I also understand, and Ms. Kies-Gamaro certainly knows this better than I as a former planning commissioner, there's like federal laws that, that will basically say, we could be in violation of federal law if we just say, no, we're not granting a cell tower because the community didn't like it. I don't even think we have that latitude. We can still end up saying that based on the size of the elementary school campus, and safety and security of a tower this tall with ice, what do they call those, the, I'm drawing a blank, that, you know, the icicles that come, but I know there's another word for them, but, yeah, but the, there's, the ice, things that can, the icicles that can get on those things, they fall on a kid in near, in a playground when we've had an ice storm, and you could severely injure not just a child, but even an adult, so, in, in a playground setting where people use our playgrounds after hours and all that stuff. So those are objective measures, we can say, from safety and security reasons, we're not putting it there, but I, I share this with governance, my community of 700 homes, we lived through a cell tower, cell tower proposal on our pool property where we really needed, our community pool needed that revenue, and it was not an objective dialogue at all, it tore our community apart, and I'm just very mindful as a board member that we are going to have to be above the fray and make some very judicious decisions on these things, and it can't be because a collective group is, isn't supportive or not, Ms. Kies-Gamaro is correct, how do you even measure it?
Thank, thank you, Megan. I appreciate it. Ms. Heinz, Ms. Evans, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Palchak.
Yeah, well, Karen, I may be stealing your suggestion, so I'll credit you with it, but the suggestion we were chatting over here was, maybe under B, we could say community and parent input, so that way we're getting the parent, at least that we're, we're saying right up front here in the policy that we are reaching out, that we're, we're at least monitoring our own, you know, but, and I would say, Mr. Wilson, you know, Crossfield was also, is also my school, right, and you'll notice that the cell tower is not on that property, and it's not ever going to be on that property, so the pushback from that community, even though we have no way of knowing whether they represented a majority of parents, we'll never know that, right, but it was several, and they were loud, and they were persistent, and there's no cell tower on that property. So I think because there is, and now that we're sort of putting in policy that we have that political responsibility up front, which we didn't before, you know, we had this policy that basically said we could, we could let staff deal with it, right? And, you know, it doesn't work because the community wants us to take a position out front, right? And I think now that we've put that in policy, if we have significant blowback from the community, you know, I know where I would be as a board member, I'll, I'll have to, you know, try to say, I don't think this is a good spot, right? So I, but I, I think I agree with Karen Kies-Gamaro that we need to control what we can control, which is who do we reach out to, not so much who do we hear from.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz, Ms. Evans.
Thank you, I, Mr. Wilson, I appreciate the intent of this language, I do agree, though, with the previous speakers that say that this is, the reason for this is to get better communication, better notification to the community, to the parents, to make sure they know right away what's going on, and the protection is with the board member, that the board member who, this gives us the protection we need with a robust process for the school board member or members to say, this just isn't going to work, so I want the board to disapprove this because, you know, the, the community isn't behind it, that's what we control, back to what Ms. Kies-Gamaro had to say, and I think that actually is the, the better approach here for us to take into account what we hear from the community, you know, we're, we're the protection there. I would support the, I think it's a positive change, whether it's Ms. Corbett Sanders or Ms. Heinz, or a number of things, I think adding parent in there, teamwork, I would, I would support adding Ann Parent up in B, but I, I don't think this, this helps this, this other language.
Ms. Palchak.
Thank you. Yes, no, I will agree with my colleagues, I appreciate the intent, I also, I think I want to second what Ms. McLaughlin was saying, we need to be, try to be objective, and it also is, it's political, I get worried if we add that language, that we are tying future boards and future board members to a decision we're making today about future community involvement and decision-making, so I think it is up to future board members to decide what support is there or not there, and to ensure that we are communicating that there is, it is back in, in the hands of the board, and that there is ample time and notification for the community, not everyone will get it, but we have to make that effort to, to communicate it and to allow for feedback before the decision is made. So I, I appreciate adding parent because not all parents live in the community, so I think that's important, but I, I can support this language, and also, my other concern is that I don't want, putting that in there gives me a little pause to think, well, well some parents or community members feel bullied that they can't be vocal one way or the other if we put this in there, if they're, you know, if someone says, oh, if anyone opposes this and there's not significant support, I just, I think that gives me a little bit of pause of putting that subjective language in there.
All right, Mr. Wilson, brief, because you have your opinion.
Yeah, if that's, if that, the board prefers to put that up there in B, community and parent input will be solicited, I think that the school community, I think it should be, in the school community, parents in the school community should be, should be added to that language, parents in the school community input will be submitted, will be, will be solicited, then, then I'm, then I'm okay, because I do agree that, you know, the board members will hear from those parents, and, but, but I, but I do want to just take a, just a bit of issue with the idea that we can be completely objective about cell tower installments, because the, the objecting parents, of course, will come with the objections such as ice will fly off this tower and hit my child on the playground, and various other reasons, and at the end of the day, that's what we are, we are representatives, and these are the constituents that we represent are those parents and, and on behalf of those kids, and so I actually would value very highly the opinions of parents in a matter like this, where a cell tower, they feel is endangering their child.
All right, thank you. So, I'm going to take a vote first on, we're, we're going to take out five, because it doesn't seem like there's support on that, and let's, the vote on B.
I, I don't mean to wordsmith, but if we're going to vote on it, like, maybe community members and parents in the school community, I mean, just, community and, thank you.
Community members and.
Take out, we're going to take out, we're going to take out five, and we're going to vote on this. So, B, "Input from community members and school parents will be solicited, blah, blah, blah." All right. No, we're, we're done. This, what's with you on the agenda? What time, Madam Clerk? For a vote approval?
So, Ms. Darnett-Cufex, I had suggested something, but at this point, it's not listed. Yes, I was saying that we did have from the community a request of, of asking why we aren't having some sort of direction to staff about proof of need, and, you know, how, how the, the applicant's going to have proof of need. So, what I will say at this point is, I'll go ahead and consider either an amendment or a follow-on, and I'll work with Mr. Plattenberg on that, because it might be that we're, with Board support, we'll do a follow-on that says, "Okay, from a next step, how do we improve our, our process with some of that objectivity of proof of need?" And we don't need to belabor it right now.
If, if I may, I think that would be a perfect component for me to envelop into the regulation, and because I took it as something I need to do to get some assurance.
So, I could work with him on a follow-on motion that the Board might, you know, direct Superintendent and staff to consider this addition to, it's the Division's regulation or something like that. I'll work with him on it.
All right.
And Madam Chair, did we correct in the authority, those, we were going to clarify the two paragraphs that overlapped in, in the authority paragraph? I think we said that F was redundant of.
Where is it?
I mean, it, I mean, it could be clarified as.
It's, where's the section on authority?
Well, so, authority is the section four.
Four.
And it was F that, that
Yeah.
makes a specific reference to elementary schools, and, but above, it was pointed out that actually all school applications could be brought to the Board if a, if a school Board member. And so, I think that if that's the case, then F is subsumed by the earlier paragraph, and we certainly don't need
Right.
on school, elementary school grounds in F.
Um, if I remember, and Ms. Evans was reminding me, you have to have the affirmative approval for an elementary.
For an elementary.
And that's why it was placed there, kind of for emphasis.
It, it was for emphasis as a part of the discussions that we had in governance, because that was an issue that the community members were really adamant about. And I do understand what you're saying about the.
Where is it in the policy that it says that it must for elementary schools? I thought it just says a preference.
But if we are going to put it on elementary school grounds, it must be affirmatively approved. That's what F is saying, as far as.
I, sorry, for clarification on F, I don't know why it's saying, "Upon request of a Board member, approval to place a wireless telecommunications facility on elementary school shall be, shall be referred to the School Board for consideration." We've already said, you can't even consider an elementary school unless it's approved by the Board. So, that says, when it says "upon request of a School Board member," it's saying that, again, if the magisterial Board members or at-larges don't feel a need, then an elementary school application isn't going to be referred to the Board.
I think that's right, I think that's right, actually. So, it should start with approval, right? The, the approval should start that sentence.
Yeah, okay. No, 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 go back down where you were at F. Down at F, where it's saying, "Approval," like, take out "upon request of a School Board member," it needs to be capital A, "approval."
Right.
Because the bottom line is, "Approval to place a wireless."
No, no.
But it would require, it would require a Board member to initiate.
Yes.
It would require a Board member to actually initiate approval.
Well, it shouldn't say "approval," it should be "consideration," then, because we're considering it. We're not, so, "Consideration."
Yeah, I think we have to say exactly what you just said, which is that consideration of an elementary school
School application, yeah.
requires
Will require.
the, the
Boards, the Boards.
active request of a Board member or something.
No, I don't think it's, that's the whole point, is I don't think it requires any Board member. It's just, "Consideration of an, of a wireless telecommunications facility application on elementary school grounds shall be referred to the Board for consideration." And it's not even coming from any Board member. Staff is going to have to bring it to us if, if someone's submitted an application. Let's say Little Run Elementary, happens to be my backyard, and there is a cell tower problem. I mean, Jeff Plattenberg could get an application for Little Run, and he'd have to bring it to the Board, not to Megan McLaughlin and the three at-larges.
Well, I think what they're saying is that it's a gating. First, it goes to the magisterial and the at-larges, and if there is not support from the magisterial, then it won't even come to the full Board. That's what you're trying to capture there, because what you don't want is Karen Corbett Sanders saying, "Hey, you know, I don't want one in my backyard, but I think it would be great in Megan's backyard."
So, why don't we just say that no application for facility, blah, 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 on elementary school grounds shall, shall come before the Board without the request of a Board member? Is that what we want to do?
No, I think we're also saying we want the full Board to see it. Is that correct? So, it has to come from a member and be considered by the full Board, is that?
But I think what Karen's saying is that that wastes the full Board's time, maybe, if there's no Board member who wants us to even consider it.
I think the problem is the language saying "approval." I think it needs to be "consideration of a wireless telecommunications facility application." So, Eileen, if you delete "approval," so, "Upon request of a Board member," and then start at A, next, so, delete "approval" to, no, yeah, delete to "place," so it would say, "Upon request of a Board member, a wireless telecommunications facility application." Telecommunications facility application, so put "application" after "facility." On, yeah, on elementary school, and "shall be referred to the Board for consideration." Is that?
Should we add something like, that is, sort of like, "That's the only?"
So, it would say, "Only upon."
Only upon, yeah.
Only upon the request of a Board member.
Only upon the request from.
How about, how about starting with "A wireless telecommunications facility application on elementary school grounds will require
Okay.
referral to, referral by a School Board member for approval by the School Board."
For consideration.
Consideration, yeah.
Well, but, well, but, but the only way it could go on is if the School Board approv- affirmatively approves it, is what, what I think we're trying to get at there, right?
Or School Board approval.
Right.
For the Board's approval.
Am I on the right track, Mr. Wilson? You know, I think if you started, "A wireless telecommunications facility application on
School Board approval."
elementary school grounds will require referral
Yep.
by a School Board member. But we're trying to get to
Yeah, so you're going to make, so you're going to delete the first part and start with A, correct?
Right.
A wireless telecommunications application.
But it's actually the facility, a wireless telecommunications facility
Facility application.
on elementary school grounds will require referral by a School Board member for approval by the full School Board, or for, for approval by the School Board.
If it's on elementary school grounds, a School Board member has to bring it to the full Board for approval.
Referral by the School Board member to the Board for approval.
Yeah.
To the Board for approval, period.
All right, yeah, let's stop wordsmithing. Let's just look at this right now. A wire, F has been modified to, "A wireless telecommunications facility application on elementary school grounds will require referral by a School Board member to the, to the Board for approval."
I don't know, it's
Yeah, it's not, it's
It's still working, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's actually, it's
I can just put my application right over on the School Board.
Well, but it's, it's actually, you take out "application," it's not
An application for a wireless telecommunications facility on elementary school grounds, right? An application for, is that how we start? A wireless
That's correct.
telecommunications facility
That's correct.
on elementary school grounds.
So, I may be misreading it, but I feel like it, it's for review, as opposed to what makes it sound like it has to go there and it has to be approved.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Oh, for consideration.
Right, for consideration, for review.
All right.
Right.
All right, this is our final that we are going to vote for, "An application for a wireless telecommunications facilities on elementary school grounds will require referral by a School Board member
Boy, that's wordy.
to the Board for consideration."
If there's any wordsmithing, I get you. Wordsmithing, just leave it with the Chair and
All right, the essence of this are people happy with, if not the grammatical content. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we will take a five-minute break, or three-minute break, and we will then go on to the Strategic Governance section of this agenda.